All right, I think we're live, we're recording, so let's begin our meeting today. Phil Stan and we'll have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance.
Lord, thank you for this day that we get to come together, Lord, and do the business of the county. I pray you'll bless this meeting and our decisions that we make that affects everyone. I pray you'll keep all our first responders in the county safe and continue to bless our county, Lord. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everyone, to our first regular meeting of the month of March. Today is the 14th of March, 2022. It's just after 9:00 a.m. now on daylight savings time. We'll begin item number one is public comment time. This is your opportunity to address the court on a non-agenda item. You may, of course, address the court on each agenda item if and when we get to those. All right, then we will move to items two and three. We'll handle separately. These are minutes. The 25th, which is being considered as item number two, was our last regular meeting. We call it a special meeting, but it was the second major meeting of the month. And I will ask that you consider approving that set of minutes that Joyce has prepared from the 25th of February.
Make a motion to approve it.
Motion is made to approve that set of minutes by Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. We had another special meeting during the week to consider options that we had related to the opioid lawsuit settlement. We had included in that, we had a conversation with attorney related to that matter, and then we had a motion after that. That was on the 28th of February. So we need to approve that set of minutes as well, if that's your pleasure.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have here Pam Holmes, our elections administrator, is going to present to you some information regarding items number four and five. The first is to consider and possibly approve an order for the May 7th constitutional amendment election. I don't know how much you can add to that, Pam, but if you want to tell us a little bit about what's going to be happening on that May 7th and maybe some background information, if there's early voting related to that and such.
We do have an election that's been ordered by the governor for the two, there's two state propositions that's going to be on the ballot, and that's all that's going to be on the ballot this time because normally this is the time that the city and the school districts would come together and have their elections. And I had five orders for election for five different entities in this area, but they've all indicated that their orders will be canceled. So that these propositions ordered by the state, by the governor, is all that's going to be on the ballot for May, May 7th.
That's it?
And that's it.
Nobody from any of your other five taxing entities had any contested race?
That's right, they're all on post.
That's amazing. Okay, so two constitutional amendments, we can't say that it's insignificant and pass on having an election? No, we're going to have an election. And so we are going to approve, I assume it will be your decision, this order from the governor to hold this election, May 7th.
Early voting will be happening, we'll have a one week of eight to five, and then two days, Monday and Tuesday, 12-hour days, seven to seven. So, and that's ordered by the state.
Okay, looking at my calendar then on that, this is in May, and so this is a Saturday, and so the early vote, refresh my memory, that'll be the week of the 25th through the 29th?
Yes, and then the second and third.
And then Monday and Tuesday. Gosh, that's a lot of time for two amendments.
It's a lot of time.
But that's what we have to do?
That's what we have to do.
We can't even, we can't shorten that?
The only thing that we might could shorten would be the 12-hour days. We could shorten it to eight to five days, but our voters have kind of gotten used to those 12-hour days, tacked on to the end of the early voting cycle.
And you've got plenty of people to fill all this?
We do, we can, we can do it.
But I guess we'll discuss that more in the next item.
That's right.
Okay, well, gentlemen, if you will, I would suggest that you make a motion to approve this order so that Pam has the official approval from the court to hold that election on Saturday, May 7.
Make a motion, we approve it.
Motion is made to approve. Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye. Talking about this same May 7th election, Pam is going to ask that you would consider reducing the number of locations to vote. Pam, before I say anything else, I'll let you give us the background there.
We have consolidated voting precincts to the four, the four is, four is our minimum that we can have, one in each commissioner precinct. And so it would be the four major city boxes that would be located at the DAV building on Washington, the Annex, the Civic Center, and then South Jefferson Baptist Church. And that covers all four commissioner precincts. And with there just being these two propositions on the ballot, I really don't see the need to open up the entire countywide polling locations.
And this is considerably fewer amendments than we had the last time that we did this. Tough to say what kind of voter turnout there will be for this, but I do remember specifically never getting one complaint about us making that move to only four boxes the last time that we did this. I think you're given four reasonable locations here for everybody to come in, especially in light of the fact that you're giving them seven days of early voting.
Yes.
So, guys, what do you think about reducing? That's obviously a significant reduction, but we have done it before without criticism. Are you okay with allowing Pam to consolidate down to four boxes?
Make a motion.
Motion is made to approve those four boxes by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. Anybody feeling uneasy about that or want to discuss that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anything you want to, since you're here, report to us about the most recent vote? I didn't get anybody calling me and complaining to me.
We had really a tremendous turnout for, a voter turnout for the primaries, and it went fairly smooth. It about sank mine and Debbie's boat beforehand because of all the law changes that have come down from the legislature. And that's mainly applicable to the mail-in ballots, and people are used to doing their mail-in ballots a certain way, and we really just tried to help them out all we could to get them to be in compliance with the law so that their vote would count.
But there were some changes related to those that had to be adjusted?
Oh, yes. Yes. And it's mainly due to identification, you know, identifying yourself if you're a mail-in ballot voter.
All right, well, we thank you for getting us through a successful election season there, and we'll have another one here right on the heels. And then right after that, I guess you'll have a runoff election on the 24th.
That's correct, on the 24th.
And so that looks to me like we'll begin, how much early voting will you have there?
I think they're going to order two weeks.
So literally, you're going to finish this constitutional election on Saturday, the 7th, and start up Monday morning on the 9th?
I believe so, yes.
With early voting?
They may consolidate that down to one week since it's a runoff. I'll have to look at the calendar.
So that's, we're not certain on that yet?
We're not certain on that.
Okay. All right, thank you for coming. Anything else?
No, that's it. I do have the order for the judge and all four commissioners to sign.
Why don't you let us do that now before you leave? Moving on to item number six, we did one of these two weeks ago when we acknowledged the submission of the racial profiling report from the county attorney's office. We have those same reports being submitted today, one from the Titus County Sheriff's Office, one from Constable Precinct One, and the last one from Constable Precinct Two. And again, we're not analyzing the data that's in these, these are on record, we simply need this to be a part of the minutes so that anyone who requests this information can obtain that information from, from our minutes. So again, we have racial profiling report to constables and the sheriff's office. So I don't think that this is an action item. I've got these, they'll become part of the minutes. We are hereby acknowledging the receipt and the submission of these racial profiling reports. Let me give you that as part of what we're going to give to Joyce for the minutes. Item number seven, discuss the purchase of structural fire protective bunker gear for volunteer fire departments with possible action. And we welcome Jerry Ward, Chief Ward, thank you for coming, contacted me about this. He has submitted a narrative here to you, and we're here to listen about this idea and consider your request.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Some of the officials don't know me real good yet. My name is Jerry Ward, I'm a Tri-Lakes Volunteer Fire Department. Been on the fire department now for 16 years, been fire chief for 15 years. I'm a firefighter too, advanced by the state fire marshals. I also served on Mount Pleasant as a volunteer firefighter for approximately five years. The reason I'm here to speak with you all today is on behalf of the volunteer fire departments that have structural firefighters. The volunteers, structural firefighters of Titus County are in needed PPE gear, structural gear. They're worn out, the sewing's coming loose in them, they're outdated, they're over 10 years of age, they're just wore out. Mount Pleasant replaces theirs every five years, if not sooner, depending on if they get ripped or what. All of ours is over 10 years of age. Ours, at our station, was purchased in 2010, so that puts them at 12 years old. The more and more we wash them after the fires, they deteriorate, they get where they don't want to protect you. I know Mount Pleasant Fire Department in Titus County, they all expect us to perform as structural firefighters. That's what we're here for. Currently, there are nine, nine structural firefighters on four of the departments in the county that are making 25% cost. In the county agreement with, with the county and the volunteers, they asked for 25%. So we got 25% of them. This not, doesn't, this does not include Talco. I just found out this morning that Talco has had another one bump up over the 25% range. So now they are at four instead of three. You're looking at Five Star has one, Nortex has two, Tri-Lakes has five. I had one firefighter that was out the majority of last year, taking his paramedic school. He should be back with us within the next week or so. Argo has one, so now we're at Talco instead of three, it'd be four, so it's 13 total sets of gear. We have two quotes. We're not asking for the most expensive gear, but then we shouldn't be asked to wear the The first quote, a full set of gear from head to toe was 20, was $2,580.17 per set. That's boots, pants, hood, jacket, helmet, gloves, full set. For 13, for 13 sets, would be $33,542.21. They told us that we could probably start receiving some of that within 90 days. The second one was $2,855 per set, and at 13 sets, I didn't run the total on it. So we're asking for the county to help us out in purchasing the 13 sets of PPE, which is turnout gear for our firefighters in the county. If something happens, that someone else comes aboard, if y'all approve this, and, or if someone else's percentage just bump up over the 25%, then the fire chiefs can just put it in the budget for the '22, '23 year. This is something that we've been needing for a long time. Grants are just not out there to get. We applied for one, Tri-Lakes did, in 2014, we haven't received it yet. It's, it's yesterday, out on 67, we had a large fire out there, and there were several volunteers there. Our gear is just, is wore out, and we need help from the county to replace this gear for the 13 individuals. The three that Talco had, the four Talco has, they've been coming the majority of the county fires, they're up over their 25%, and that's what the county has asked for us to do. You know, it's, it's, we're in need of it. I don't like coming up here, I'm not a public speaker, but when I do come up, it's something important. So that's why I'm here today, just to ask you all to try to help us out on purchasing this gear and not wait until the end of the year, until the new budget comes in.
I have a couple of questions. Have we ever done this before?
No.
How have you paid for these in the past?
We've got grants or, the Texas Forestry Service has what they call Helping Hands. You submit to them, tell them what you need, when they get it in, you know, they'll call you, you can go down and look at what they got. The stuff that they've had the last couple of times that I went there was wore out, it was junk. Not all counties are so strict on the volunteers as far as PPE, as Titus County is. Chief McRae and Deputy Chiefs, you know, they've got on to us about our shaving, our gear, if it's not good enough to wear, we don't go in, we don't fight fire with. The Helping Hands, they just, there's junk what they got too. They try to do it, some counties allow them to do it. They put on ripped stuff, they let them fight fire, but we don't do that here in Titus County.
So they, they don't write you a check? They're, they're, the way that they help you is in kind, they give you, they give you this equipment?
Right.
Albeit, albeit used?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you've received in the past?
Yes, sir.
You ever gotten brand-new equipment from them?
No, you don't get it from the Helping Hand. It's all used stuff.
Have you ever gotten a monetary grant that you were able to use for this?
Ours, we got ours through FEMA, and I've submitted two more since then, and we never received them. And I also put one in with the Texas Forestry Service in 14, and which, that would be a brand-new, that's a cost share grant, 90-10, but we have never got to own the structural gear.
My second question is Talco being an independent, you know, fully funded department from the city of Talco, why would we be buying them bunker gear?
Well, my thinking is, you know, there's only just a few of them. They do come out in the county, and they've been showing up to quite a few of the structural fires in the county. They're, they're hitting their 25%. You know, if it was 10 or 15 people, you know, I'd say just let Talco take care of itself, let them talk for themselves, but just being, you know, three sets, four sets, whatever it is, then I think it would be a good asset in the future for them to have good gear.
Do they not, are, what's the status of their bunker gear? Are they hurting like you all are?
Yeah.
And why does the city not pay for that?
It's old. Man here's from Talco.
Oh, good.
He can probably tell you more on that subject than I can.
Sure, yeah.
We're also in the same situation as many of the...
Will you come up to the mic so folks at home can hear you?
We're, we're in the same situation as many of the volunteer departments. We have applied for grants, they're just not getting approved like they was many years ago. We have, on our department, there's only two sets of gear that is in date, and they were purchased about five years ago. So everything else is out of date, torn up, has been passed down from several firefighters. So probably not the right size, appropriate size for the guys and women that are there. And the funding is just not being approved like it was, and through FEMA grants or the Forestry Service, and we're just, we're running out of time.
The, the age of the gear is a national standard, National Fire Protection Association rules that. After we had our two fatality, our two deaths in Titus County of firefighters, I started doing some checking. It had nothing to do with the gear they were wearing at the time. Our insurance will not cover us if we're hurt on a structural fire, if we're in outdated and gear that does not meet the standards. They said we're on our own, so either...
What, what insurance is that?
The volunteer fire insurance in Texas Mutual that covers, I think it's Texas Mutual that covers our workers' comp, through BFFAS. You've got to be wearing the proper protective equipment. They said they're doing that across their board. Now, if we can find someone else to cover that, which is pretty much nonexistent, when we had the problems out of them with the other stuff not wanting to pay initially, we started shopping, and nobody wants to cover firefighters and fire trucks on insurance that's out there. It's just one of those iffy things that's, that's going on. They did tell me, and they gave me a checklist, it was like 75 pages long, the stuff that we're supposed to be doing. Some of it, I don't care how much money's thrown at us, we'll never be able to accomplish what's on those lists of everything they say volunteer firefighter needs to be able to do to stay in service. And one, we just don't do some of the calls that they're talking about on it. We don't need to be prepared for some of the things that other cities need to be prepared for on it. But that 10-year mark in the gear passing inspections is a national standard that where everybody's supposed to be meeting, and it just does not happen everywhere that you go to. I've seen gear being worn by surrounding counties with holes in it. Those people aren't protected when they go in to fight fire. The gear I've got at Nortex, my pants are 1999, and my coat is a 2000 model. I hope my wife's not watching this, and she hears that, because that's, that's how old my stuff is. We do have a couple of new sets that we purchased in the last four to five years, but it, it set us back. And right now, with fuel costs, I don't know that I can purchase any more gear with what we're about to put in trucks after, just yesterday, after the call.
Okay, well, that's, that is good to know, that this is an item that could potentially disqualify you for, for benefits. That's significant. Is bunker gear stay with the individual firefighter in his truck, or does it stay on your, on your engine or, or whatever?
On our department, there's one, two, three, there's four of us that carry our vehicles, and then the rest of them are in station.
The reason I was asking is if Tri-Lakes is saying we, we need five, and, and we know the odds are that not all those guys are going to show up each time, if we bought three instead of five and just kept them on the truck, would that...
Well, the size is...
It's not one size fits all?
It's this tall, and then this tall.
So we buy a small, medium, and a large, that may not do it?
And when we talked to you, I guess Brad said that, you know, they come out in about two weeks, they got to do measurements on them, make sure that all fits out.
Yeah, could I get you back in front of the mic, Chief?
Sorry. They'll be out here in about two weeks if approved, where they can do measurements on all the firefighters that we're getting them for.
Okay, so everyone, now all sets of these 12, we could safely say are going to firefighters who are active in their training, they are as active as anybody else as far as showing up at an event, and by their past performance, they are worthy of a $2,500, $3,000 investment.
I want to say these are your more accurate?
Yes.
The, and it's, I think your paper says 12, but it's actually 13.
It is, since we just...
13 sets, but basically you're more accurate with the firefighters.
I sat down with Brad and Chief McRae two weeks ago, I guess, and talked about it, and we went down the list, and we picked out structural firefighters that they would allow to go on scene and fight fire. There's some that just refuse to shave, or some that just don't show up, and they've been taking them off the list. You know, if you ain't gonna make the calls, you ain't gonna do the training, then we take you off the list. So the ones we picked out, or they had picked out, are the ones that do show up, that they would send in if they needed to.
Okay, and of course, he's not here to add to the discussion. Chief McRae, you say you've discussed this with him, he would say, yes, this is an accurate representation of, and I hate to use the terms, this would be a good bet that this stuff is going to get used by these 13 individuals on a regular basis?
And out of that 13, there were eight or nine of them that were registered there.
Okay, all right.
And we used, we used all of them there on that, on the fire yesterday up close to Commissioner Fitch's house there, so.
Comments, guys? Not necessarily a motion yet, but what, what do you think about this? Like this, this MES brand's a good enough brand for you, one with the better price, and then we'd, we'd need 14 sets, no, 13 sets, be $33,542.21.
Yeah, 13 sets.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of that. These are top-of-the-line guys, these are structural firing people that you need.
Both of these sets of gear were compared on the space.
Okay.
They're both within, basically the same year, when we all, so I spaced out for a little bit, it's the same.
Other commissioners?
I'd be in favor of it, I think it's a good deal.
It's something that's needed. We always in the past have been able to get grants and, and all, and they're just not there anymore. I don't know why, but they're not, just like everything else. It's something, if you guys are going to fight fire, I've, I've got a set that I've had for 10, 20 years probably, or longer, and of course, I don't do any firefighting anymore, and mine's is in, in my bag that I've had, and it, it, you know, I wouldn't want anybody to go in a fire with it because it's, it's old and all. But I think it's, I think it's a good thing, I think we need to, need to look at doing it for them. And if, Ed, my thoughts, one thing that I'll throw in there is, I don't think anybody's needing any hoes right now. We could, Mike could take that money that we've been giving them each year, had it budgeted, and put it in, in on this. and put it in on this, you know, for this year anyway. If need be. Am I right, guys, with the-
I'll be with that.
I still have a little question about Talco, not picking on you or anything, I think I kind of understand, but sometimes Talco wants to participate, sometimes they kind of want to be independent. I wonder if maybe we could kind of have a happy medium here, and maybe we could get some of the things we've been asking for from Talco. And I have no complaints about Talco, don't get me wrong, but, you know, we did go through that issue where they felt like they didn't need to sign the agreement, or I hate to use the word contract, the agreement, we called it, that all the other departments, and that caused a little bit of friction. Maybe we might could find a happy medium there. We buy you three sets, and maybe y'all could make some concessions for us.
That could be something we could look into. On this list of the gear that we are requesting, those guys, regardless of any contract or anything, get in their vehicle and they show up every time we are talking about them, but they can't wear them many times. And some of them are well beyond 25 percent.
That's what I was gonna say, out of the four that they're requesting, they've got more structural firefighters over there than that. It's the only four that come out in the county. You see the same four, and the last couple of fires without them, we wouldn't have been able to do it, Judge. And I was the one of the ones that fought against not having the same agreement. I mean, I was, but I would support these four.
And I'm not even, and I'm not implying that we haven't gotten the performance out of them. I think there was just some little minor stuff, like, you know, we weren't doing our reports with the same format, or some things like this. Maybe we could get more aligned there. And I think I'll have to refer back to Chief McCray as to what's something that maybe Talco would be willing to do to make an adjustment there to make life easier for him, and maybe for our auditors. That's just a possibility. But I have no problem giving my full support to Talco on this. And I have no problem giving full support to this purchase here, quite honestly.
I have been here for previous meetings, but I can tell you that we have changed things in our department. We have changed our reports. I know for sure we swapped over to a report that is based off of Chief McCray's new volunteer reports.
Okay.
We've changed some of our standards, and many of our PPE guidelines to help comply with that, which Chief McCray is trying to start.
Okay, good.
Yes, there is change that's happened, just not, maybe not anything that you aren't seeing immediately.
Well, again, I don't think that this court would have ever approved not making you all sign that contract if we were in any way uncomfortable with your performance. Barbara, would we pay for this with a contingency draw?
Yes, sir.
What about the hose money account? Should we take some out of that?
We can certainly do that.
Are we already done that?
But I want to make sure that we don't, you know, something changes or something happens, and then they need that, because hose is something that when you need it, I'm assuming that you need it right now.
I agree. If you're gonna take some, if you're gonna pull something out of contingency, just pull the whole amount.
We did borrow some of them.
Yeah, y'all messed up some stuff yesterday.
I was fixing, that's what I was just thought about after I made that suggestion a while ago, was I knew we lost some out there yesterday.
They had more hose than you could strung everywhere. It was something, I see where hose goes. They would stop and add a couple of big joints of hose, crank back up, keep going. It was something.
And it's something, when we get through with this item, I would like for Brad to kind of tell us what we went through out there yesterday, and the reasoning that, I'm thinking we need to put some kind of ordinances in place for our county, because that was something out there yesterday.
A good example why you need them, huh?
Do what?
A good example why you might need some ordinances.
Exactly, and I've got a video on my phone right here of it, if anybody wants to see it, of what was out there, of what we had to deal with.
All right, well, we will have him do that. Okay, everybody seems to be in favor. Anybody want to, and we're okay with the MES brand?
Sir?
We're okay with the MES brand?
Yes, Chief.
And 13 sets?
Yes.
Yes.
It's 33, 542, 21.
33, 542.
If for some reason it's over that, I think the fire departments can cover the difference on it.
All right.
Or the shipping on it.
Go ahead, make that motion. We purchase that equipment, 13 sets. Commissioner Fitch makes a motion that the county purchase 13 sets of full bunker gear from MES at $2,580, 17 per set, for a total of $33,542, to be distributed according to the numbers we've got here. Five Star One, Nortex Two, TriLakes Six, is that right?
Five.
Who gets the extra one?
Talco.
Okay, Talco.
Argo One and Talco.
Nortex One, TriLakes Two, excuse me, TriLakes Five, Nortex Two, Five Star One, Argo One, Talco Four, a total of 13 sets of PPE slash turnout gear slash bunker gear. That's the motion.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Parkman. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous decision. I hope that that's, you guys understand, we support this, you know, this is a reasonable request. It's not a cheap one, but it's a reasonable one, and we've got the performance here to back this up. This stuff isn't gonna sit in the closet, I don't think.
We thank y'all.
And we thank you.
You're welcome.
Brad, you wanted to give us two minutes about what you dealt with yesterday, and what the situation was, and we're kind of using you to maybe generate some discussion on maybe some changes the county needs to make in the way of some ordinances to maybe address the way people keep their premises.
Well, Kyle came in yesterday between 1:30 and 2 o'clock, about 1:45, I believe, was the time on it. Came in as a structure fire, 67 West, and when we arrived, it was a, I don't know if you could call it a shop, it was a lean-to built upon the house, probably 1,800 square foot lean-to, however, old sheet metal. We encountered 42 vehicles, I believe was the number we finally came up with, an old trailer house, school buses, boats, there was everything behind this house, stacked up next to this house. Probably 30, 40 sets of tires would be my guess, stacked up next to the house, some of them in the back room of the house that looked like us. It got, burned all 42 vehicles, the shed, the house, the trailer house. It's a total loss out there, everything was. We could not work, I told commissioners this morning, I almost called the backhoes to come try to push us some lines in between these cars so we could actually work in there to put the fire out. It did cross property lines. I've never seen the junk piled up at a house anywhere like this before. It was, of course, I've never dealt with 42 cars on fire at one time either. But there was no clear path through it all, and everything was just stacked in on top of each other, but behind this house. Animals running loose, there was, we had to deal with a wild dog the whole time we were back there. Apparently, they'd been feeding this thing out in the backyard of the house, the best we could tell. And we also learned it had a basement. We had no clue we had really anything around that had basements, and that this house had a, had a full basement in it that fell through. Luckily, I didn't have anybody inside at the time of it.
Is that below the trailer, or is there a house?
There was a house there also. There was a brick house that was sitting there up on the hill. The vehicles came all the way up to the roadway. They were parked, I think the county's dealt with them several times, on their vehicles parked. There was cars parked all the way to the roadway, in the front yard, all the way around the house. You couldn't make access to this house. There was definitely indeed some type of ordinance on that side of it. And just the way it'd been added on to, and I know there's no building codes or anything outside the city limits, but the way this thing had been added on to over years, just created a pretty good heartache. It's about the second or third one, actually, recently, that's been added on to. The one, what was it, 1342, had like four addicts on it to the night, where they put so many roofs stacked up on it, that we kept having to cut through different holes to try to find the fire. So, it's just, it's a struggle, and I don't know how you deal with it, but just all the junk and debris that was being stored yesterday was definitely a hazard. There's probably a big hazard out there right now with all the oil and fuel and everything else that's been dumping out of all this stuff that was burning yesterday. And it's, I'm sure, it was still burning this morning when you came into town, sir. We could not put the fire out. We had every truck the county had, fire truck the county had out there at one point in time yesterday fighting fire, and we couldn't haul enough water to put this fire out. Well, I guess we could have, if we'd stayed all night, still been out there today, working on it. It was easier to just let some of it burn itself out.
Do you have any idea what may have caused the fire?
Nobody was home at the time of the fire. He had left, I don't know how long before the fire was actually seen, but it was in the little, what he called his shop out beside the house is where the fire started. But when I left Central Fire Station over in Dulwood Park, I saw the column of smoke from there. It was already that well involved before we ever received the phone call about it. So, the neighbor said he heard something popping for 20, 30 minutes before he went outside to see what was going on. So, I don't know how long it had been burning before we received the first call.
Thank you. How many total guys did you have? Guys, girls? How many people did you have on the scene?
Counting the three that were on the amulets, well, we had 36 firefighters that actually showed up yesterday. And then we had three on the amulets. The Sheriff's Department came out, they had two or three people. We had shipped down 67, so Tex Dot had a crew of four that came out and stayed the whole time with us on that, so we had 40 to 45 people total when it was all said and done.
We couldn't even get the trucks off of the highway. We had to pull hose all the way back in. Well, what was it, three acres, four acres back in there?
Probably. We had at one point-
We had to pull hose all the way-
Nearly five, we did, hose coming off of Mount Pleasant engine, and I don't know what they had coming off the Nortex truck and Sugar Hill trucks on the other side, because I never made it to that side of the fire.
We had had probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 3 to 400 foot off out there, at least that, in the neighborhood area to get over into that. And it was, it was something that I've never seen before, and I don't want to see it again. That's one reason that I said that, and another thing too, I have, here in the last month, I've received several phone calls of people won't know what our codes were to build and all in the county, and when I tell them there is none, they, "Oh, really?" And, you know, it's something that I think we have, the way things are going now, that we're gonna have to put some type of codes together to, for the county. There's a house going up, or, and I say going up, it's completely redone it, out here on Highway 67 towards Coop. They left the old existing roof in, and now they've put high pitched roof on it, on top of that, and you get a fire between those two roofs, all you can do is start cutting holes till you find where it's at. I mean, it's, you know, and you're putting people in danger when you do that. So, I think it's something that here in the near future, we need to, need to sit down and talk about, look at.
Yeah, you open up a whole new can of worms.
I know.
People want their freedom, but at the same time, you know, we said that about subdivision ordinances too, but I do think you can make steady progress.
True.
All right, thank you, and to everybody that participated in that. Were you able to save any damage to any of the neighbors, for the most part?
One, the one house to the west had no damage. The house to the east, he lost a few signs and different things he had leaned up against his barn, but no extra significant damage to any of their property.
Good, all right. Thank you, fellas.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate it. Item number eight, considering possibly approved, the Magnolia Estates subdivision. I have Clint Bain here to help us, but let me read his narrative. We have dealt with this individual, four, James Arledge. This letter comes from Sergeant Bain. I reviewed the overall site plan regarding onsite sewage submitted by James Arledge. The plan was completed by George Sanford. He's a professional engineer we've worked with many times. The property in question is identified as 4.75 acres. Previously, this land was subdivided by Mike and David Edwards, and it was the Caddo Trace lots, number one through seven. During their development of Caddo Trace, they found themselves unable to sell the seven lots, and they petitioned us to consolidate that. So, years ago, we took those seven lots and we turned them back into one tract. That helped out on some property taxes, I believe, was part of the reason. Since then, the property has been sold to different owners with ACH Construction, and that's Arledge being the current owner. Due to our current development requirements and local orders for onsite sewage, stipulating minimum lot size of one acre, the developer proposes the property, again, 4.75 acres, divided into four lots, with each being slightly over one acre. And I've got, George Sanford has submitted his plan, which again, has been approved. We've got confirmation that we do have utilities available out there. We've met the one acre requirements. Is there a new road gonna be involved in this whatsoever?
Yeah, then we'll have road running, 4840.
Okay, so we don't have, we don't have a road, road management, road maintenance, road construction, none of that is involved here. Chief McCray's acknowledgement is here. TriSpecial Utilities, Aaron Gann has said, yes, we can get water here. I think it's all here. I've given you all a small copy of these four lots. Again, these were previously, this was a previous subdivision that was consolidated back into 4.75. The new owner is gonna give it another shot and create bigger lots, a little over one acre apiece. So, James has been good to work with in the past, and I believe everything is in order for this Magnolia subdivision.
I make a motion, we approve it.
And this is Commissioner Parker's precinct. Motion is made by Commissioner Parker to approve the Magnolia subdivision.
Second.
Magnolia Estates, second by Commissioner Applewhite. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Item number nine, considering possibly approved, an easement. TriSpecial Utility District, or we call them TriWater, has made a request that they be allowed to cross some county property in Precinct Three. What do we need to know about this, Commissioner Applewhite?
This is, they're going right in front of the old precinct barn, and they're gonna be boring, instead of digging it, and they're putting an 8-inch line down there and replacing one of their old lines, and as far as any kind of damage to the ground, they're gonna just, like I said, they're just gonna be boring the 8-inch line.
It's not gonna disrupt any of our structures, any of our roads?
No, it's off 71, it's off the highway.
Okay.
It's on the, right away on our part.
That's a reasonable thing to do?
Yes.
They're paying for all of it?
Yes, we're not paying.
It has virtually no impact on us?
No, they're just wanting to get an agreement that they can go through there.
Okay, and they have submitted a right-of-way easement here. There's no dollars involved. Well, there's $1 involved here. $1 is valuable consideration for TriSpecial Utility to be able to cross county property, so that right-of-way easement is here for my signature, should you approve this.
Make a motion to approve it?
Motion is made to approve this request from TriSpecial Utility District to cross our property with the right-of-way easement that is necessary.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to jump to item 11, excuse me, item 12, and get a report from commissioners regarding roadwork status. That will complete everything on the agenda with the exception of our standard reports, and then we're gonna carve out some time here to spend with Gary Luba and Lotner. to carve out some time here to spend with Gary Luba and Lotner and right-of-way matters related to FM 1735. And Gary, what do you think it'll take us? Five minutes in executive session? And so you all are welcome to hang out, out there. For those of you that have got better things to do, you're welcome to go, but that's how I'm going to plug this in. So let's deal with our road status from our commissioners, and I'll start with Commissioner Parchman.
We basically have been doing lots of side cutting, been replacing culverts, lots of scavenging and a little bit of patching.
Thank you.
Precinct Two, we've been doing some side cutting on 2400 and 4550. And we'll continue doing some more of that side cutting this week. And we worked on some soft spots on 1065 and worked on where a culvert was getting exposed. And been patching potholes and scavenging all, just kind of all over the county precincts.
Okay. Commissioner?
We've been doing some patching, just cleaning up some roads, roadway and some ditch, ditches. And right now, we're, we started last week on 30, Cannon Road 3355. We taking dead trees off the roadway that we gonna, we're gonna try to chip seal this summer on that road to keep it from falling, all the debris on the road and everything. So we're starting up again today on that same road. And we're trying to get, there were about six, seven dead trees. One of them was, was all the, one dump truck, just the base of it was haul, it was so big. So we're just trying to get all it, all it cleaned up.
Thank you.
We've been cutting some trees and, and some dead trees that we had that, that I've been trying to get down and, and patching and installed a couple of culverts, so.
All right. Thank you. Let's try to begin with Gary here. In about three minutes, we're going to go into executive session. So if I can get a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll begin in three minutes. All right, it is 10:10, March 14, 2022. We've just completed a 10-minute executive session with Gary Luba, Lotner, right-of-way 1735. And we are back in regular session. We'll move to item number 11, considering possibly approve right-of-way related matters in reference to FM 1735 project. And it's my understanding, you've got two, two more landowners that you've made settlements with, that you're ready to approve us paying. Do we have the documents in order today to give that to the auditor's office for payment? Are we not quite there yet?
I get that after I get it signed on the D's, then I get the preliminary.
Okay. So we're, we're a ways off.
I've everything, all the time it's hard to send.
So really, do we have, do we have anything to approve then?
Uh, no, sir. Not as far as that goes.
Okay.
So this, this, that you.
Executive session was, was just to apprise us on some negotiations on a couple of different parcels. And so we go again to item 11, which is to approve right-of-way related matters and...
Road.
There's really not any.
Next time, I guess they all have some preliminary.
Okay. So we're not quite ready to do that. So item number 11, no action because there is no FM 1735 matters to be decided today. Gary, do you have everything signed that you need signed today, if anything?
Yes, sir.
All right. Then we are complete with FM 1735. Let's move on to item number 13, approve oral and written reports.
Make a motion, we approve the reports.
Motion to approve those reports is made by Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye. We have the treasurer's report from Cheryl, right after that.
Make that motion.
Motion for approval is made by Commissioner Applewhite. Okay.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. Any discussion or questions for Cheryl? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
If you could get your signatures going on those two matters. We do have a couple of budget amendments. I'll hold off till you get those signed. Right. Two budget amendments. First is Amendment 2022-13. You recall in our last meeting, we approved receiving that donation from M-FAB for $1,639.70. So we are recognizing that donation, that unbudgeted revenue in the amount of $1,640. And that, again, will be, will flow directly to pay for those body cameras, for new body cameras. Item 2022-14 affects Precincts One and Two. We're reallocating some funds within that budget, no new money. Precinct One is pulling $6,000 out of their bridges budget and 2,000 out of other road materials and putting it into gravel and rock. And then Precinct Two is pulling $5,000 out of part-time salaries that were budgeted and putting that into gas and oil. I hear that's gone up. Those are the only two budget amendments.
Make a motion, we approve the amendments.
Motion to approve these is made by Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 16, sign pay orders and approve payment of current bills.
Make a motion, pay our bills.
Motion by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 17, closing comments. I, I can't think of anything that I've got today. I appreciate you supporting the fire departments today. I thought that was a reasonable move. It wasn't a cheap move, but I think that it shows our continued support for these departments, especially when they're asking for guys that are getting the proper training and that are, are active participants in these departments. I think that was a good move. Commissioner Parker, do you have anything to add today?
No, sir.
Commissioner Applewhite?
No, sir.
Commissioner Fitch?
No, sir.
Commissioner Parch?
No.
All right. Quite a bunch today. All right. It's not 9:15, it's 10:15. And with a motion to adjourn, we will do just that.
Make a motion.
Motion is Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we'll bring our meeting to an end at 10:17. Thank you, everyone.